Good evening. The June 12th meeting of the City Council of Evanston will come to order. Would the Clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Hackettis.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Present.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
Councilmember Nusma.
Here.
Councilmember Burns.
Here.
Councilmember Sufferden.
Here.
Councilmember Revell.
Here.
Mayor Abyss.
Here. We have a quorum present and are ready to get to work. The first item on this evening's agenda is my announcements and proclamations, of which there are three. The first is a proclamation declaring June of 2023 LGBTQ Pride Month. So it reads as follows, whereas the city of Evanston is a welcoming community committed to equality for all residents, and whereas 54 years ago in June of 1969, patrons and supporters of the Stonewall Inn in New York City staged an uprising to resist harassment and discriminatory laws and practices against the LGBTQ community, the riots and protests marked the beginning of the modern LGBTQ movement, and whereas the city of Evanston is dedicated to fostering acceptance of all its residents and preventing discrimination and bullying based on sexual orientation and gender identity, and whereas the city of Evanston is strengthened by the rich diversity of ethnic, cultural, racial, gender, and sexual identities of its residents, all of which contribute to the vibrant character of our city, and whereas nationwide, four out of 10 LGBTQ youth say the community in which they live is not accepting of LGBTQ people, and LGBTQ youth are twice as likely as their peers to be physically assaulted, and whereas it is imperative that the young people of the city of Evanston, regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity, feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers, educators, and community leaders, now therefore I do hereby proclaim the month of June 2023 as LGBTQ Pride Month in the city of Evanston, and encourage all people to recognize the enduring efforts and ongoing contributions of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer communities with our city. I want to thank Evanston Pride for the work they've done. We were, I was really proud to kick off the parade that occurred a few weeks ago. I was unable to be at the vigil that occurred last night, but I know that Councilmember Haddakakis was there representing the city, and just appreciate the work that's being done in a time that putting out that beacon really matters a lot because it's not being shown from all corners of this country. Next, we have proclamation celebrating Evanston's Real Independence and Freedom Day, Juneteenth. Whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, declaring the slaves in Confederate territory free, paving the way for the passage of the 13th Amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States of America, and whereas word about the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation was delayed some two and a half years to June 19th, 1865, in reaching authorities and African-Americans in the South and Southwestern United States, and whereas Emancipation Day observations are therefore held on different days in different states in the South and the Southwest and other parts of the nation, and whereas June 19th has a special meaning to African-Americans, and is called Juneteenth combining the words June and 19th, and has been celebrated by the African-American community for over 150 years, and whereas the annual Juneteenth celebration in the city of Evanston will take place on Saturday, June 17th, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., beginning with the parade from the Robert Crown Community Center to the Morton Civic Center with celebrations taking place in Ingram Park, now therefore I do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2023, as Juneteenth Day in the city of Evanston, and urge all citizens to become more aware of the significance of this celebration in African-American history and in the heritage of our nation and city. And I just want to say that it's a recent development that we as a city have formally recognized Juneteenth as a holiday, as a city holiday. It's a recent development that we have a parade, which I think is rapidly becoming a cherished community tradition, and it's an indication, I think, of how much work we continue to have to do in this field, and I want to thank all of those organizers, including and particularly Comon Hendricks, for both putting out a tremendous amount of time to make these commemorations successful, and frankly, for ensuring that the city does the right thing and takes seriously our communal responsibility of acting not only as an entity to commemorate, but also to educate and to lift up this really critical message. And finally, I have a last proclamation that was initially read at the first Friday celebration at Mason Park, declaring June 2nd, 2023 Gun Violence Awareness Day. It reads as follows, whereas every day more than 120 Americans are killed by gun violence and more than 200 are shot and wounded, with an average of more than 17,000 gun homicides every year, and whereas Illinois has over 1,600 gun deaths a year with a rate of 12.9 deaths per 100,000 people, representing the 35th highest rate of gun death in the country. And whereas in January of 2013, Hadiya Pendleton, a teenager who marched in President Obama's second inaugural parade, was tragically shot and killed at age 15, and on June 2nd, 2023, to recognize the 26th birthday of Hadiya Pendleton, who was born on June 2nd of 1997, people across the United States recognized National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wore orange in tribute to Hadiya Pendleton and other victims of gun violence and the loved ones of those victims. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadiya's friends, who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange, they chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life, and whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 2nd to help raise awareness about gun violence, and whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our families, communities, and children safe, now therefore I do hereby proclaim the first Friday in June, June 2nd, 2023, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. And here to accept this proclamation, and frankly, to accept our thanks for their advocacy, for their tireless work on an issue that is not only incredibly important, but that sometimes can feel so demoralizing that it can be hard to continue the work, and yet without doing that work, we know that we will lose more lives. Here to, here to take another step in their really impactful journey of activism are volunteers from People for Safer Society, from Moms Demand Action, if you would come forward and accept this proclamation, we would love to recognize you for all of your work. That concludes my lengthy announcements. The next item on the agenda is the City Manager's Public Announcements.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Clerk Mendoza. First up, I want to call our CFO, Hitesh Desai, and our Budget Manager, Clayton Black, to come up to the podium, please. I'm just going to read, the city is honored to have received the GFOA award. I'm just going to read briefly about this prestigious award. City of Evanston has been awarded the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award by the Government and Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, GFOA. The award, which recognizes the city's fiscal 2023 budget document, is the highest form of recognition in government budgeting. In order to receive the award, the city had to satisfy nationally-recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation. The guidelines are designed to assess how well the budget document serves as a policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide, a communications device. A panel of independent reviewers must rate budget documents as proficient in all four categories and in 14 mandatory criteria within those categories in order to be recognized. If we could offer up a round of applause for our budget team. Please.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council and managers. I think you covered what is the budget is, yeah, this is by the Government Finance Officers Association, which is a part of the U.S. and Canada, thousands of that, and again, he mentioned the four criteria, that okay, this should be like kind of readable by the layman, you know, the simple person, so that's why sometimes they say, as like a financial plan or the operation guide, so that should be understandable, but previously, many years back, it was like a very precise, now they ask us to include more and more information, you know, and so the communities can look at that, okay, which direction city is going, what is the financial, what happened even in the past, include two more years of history and all that kind of, a lot of statisticals have been lately added to be part of the budget, so only then you can have, and again, yep, thanks to the mayor, the members of City Council for your strategic direction, my peers, the staff, all that, I mean, this is a teamwork, without that, yeah, we cannot do this comprehensive budget plan.
Thank you. And next up, Mr. Mayor, we have Mike Houlihan from Drexwood Partners here to talk about their efforts in our partnership and their work in Springfield.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I just wanted to come in, give a quick overview of the end of session, and talk about kind of our work down there, both with Drexwood and Carson Group. This year was kind of a return to normal, if you will, after three years of COVID, and then you could argue that we had a pretty impressive year with JB's first year in terms of what was on the, you know, docket and what got passed, and then we had four years of Bruce Rounner, not up here to make any commentary, but those were strange years, at least for Springfield, so I would say this was a return to normal in a lot of ways. After a series of late nights, session ended the Friday of Memorial Day weekend, past the 19th, which was our scheduled adjournment, but before the 31st, our top legislative priority this year was capital and bringing back some money to the city of Evanston. Senate Bill 250 was the budget bill we were able to get in Section 2705, which was $1 million for, for the capital infrastructure improvements to Beck Park. We were able to achieve in Section 1635, a $600,000 capital line item for what will be the living room. Both line items are directly to the city of Evanston to maximize flexibility, but that will be spent on both St. Francis and the Turning Point living room capital improvements. Some other highlights, LGDF, which there was a lot of debate over what that looked like, it was a scheduled increase to a funding rate of 6.47%, which will be a slight upgrade. I believe it was at 6.2 or 6.16 last year. I don't know if anyone read any of our, we were tracking a handful of bills for the city. Couple highlights were, the governor just signed SB 40, which sets forth a bunch of regulations, rules regarding electronic vehicle charging and what municipalities, residential construction, and others need to do. We had, the guaranteed income exemption was passed, both chambers, has not been sent to the governor, obviously, the governor, the chambers have 30 days to send it to the governor, 60 days to act for the governor. Let's see, Affordable Housing Plan, Senate Bill 1476, that passed both chambers as well, four years for municipalities to get up to speed and comply with some of the affordable housing requirements. I have a feeling Evanston may be ahead of those as it sits now, but something to watch. Unfortunately, Senate Bill 506, which was the Park District bill, did not make it. AFSCME, the union, weighed in pretty heavily, and that was held in committee. For those of you unaware, that was to allow municipalities that did not have separate park districts a carve-out like the rest. And, and that is, that's about it unless there are any questions.
Councilmember Reed. Thank you. Thank you for the work that you all performed for the city. Just want to get a deeper understanding of a few things. Well, first, I guess this is for city staff, I'm sorry, Beck Park is in what ward? Does someone know who's? Yes. Fifth ward, okay, wonderful. Thank you. And I'm sorry, how much did you secure for that park?
A million dollars.
Okay. And, and then the living room, you secured 600,000, is what I believe I heard?
Yep.
Okay, and, thank you, and what does LGDF stand for?
It's the Local Distributive Fund.
Oh, Local Government Distributive Fund, okay. Yep, thank you. And can you explain further what happened with the LGDF and how that impacts Evanston?
So there were, I guess, roll it back to the Rounner years. We went down from basically 10% to 6%. Actually, no, it was lower than that, it was actually five and change. And when we were having the budget crisis, obviously, we came out of that, we raised the income tax to, you know, 4.95%, and there were many people that felt like the 6% of 4.95% was basically equal to the 10% of 3%, right? So there's been a long battle, a lot of municipalities, the IML has taken this up as a big issue for them, they've been trying to get an increase, or actually, back to the 10%, which would, in a lot of ways, be a, if my math is right, I've looked to the former mathematician, but I think 66% increase over where it was prior, right, with, if you go to 5% and you bump it back to 10. So this was part of a scheduled increase to the LGDF. Last year, as I mentioned, I think it was 6.16%. This year, fiscal year '24, it raises up to 6.47%.
Thank you, and Hitesh, I don't know if you walked away, but is my memory correct that we receive about $600,000 annually from the Local Government Distributive Fund?
Yeah, it's actually, it's actually quite a bit more than that, and we believe that this most recent increase is going to net us about $500,000 additional dollars.
Do you know what we received last year roughly?
I don't have the exact figure, but I know that this new increase will be in the neighborhood of $500,000 or so.
Okay, wonderful. And then the Park District carve-out, can you explain that a bit more?
Yeah. What happened in the original bill was that part-time employees at park districts were carved out from some of the union provisions. This was a bill that was passed prior to our representation of you, of the city, and so a handful of municipalities that have a park district department of the city, as opposed to a separate agency of the park district, were looking for their part-time employees to be treated the same way, right?
Which would mean that our part-time employees would be non-union members?
Correct. But not only that, they would be not entitled to some of the benefits that the full-time folks would have gotten.
I see how some folks would appreciate that. I don't know how supportive I am of that, and I don't know if that's something that this body would want to necessarily support. I was, and I'll start wrapping up here, I was one of the councilmembers who was a bit skeptical of this. I certainly think there is, there was a need internally to have someone represent the city, particularly looking for grants. I think one of my concerns early on was that if we were to hire a lobbyist, and part of the focus was, hey, we're not really going to hire lobbyists, we're going to have folks who are going to focus on getting grants and bringing money back to the city of Evanston. And one of my concerns was something similar to this Park District carve-out. I don't know if that aligns with certainly my values, or maybe the values of this council, or the values of our city, that we would want to pay a lobbyist to go to Springfield and potentially take away benefits from part-time employees who work for municipal government. And so I speak for myself here, certainly, and really to what we originally voted on. I would love, it was really helpful, one, having you come here and explain some of this stuff to us, that's more than IML does. While we have IML who represents us largely, they don't send someone here every year to break down what happened in session, so that part is really helpful, but I would love to see, on behalf of the taxpayers and this council, maybe more of a focus on bringing back direct grants and funding to the city, and certainly, as I think I requested at the time that this was passed, if there was a legislative agenda that was going to be supported on behalf of the city of Evanston, that, that would come back to us and we'd have an opportunity in some manner to say, yes, we want you to go lobby on behalf of the city of Evanston to support a Park District carve-out that would take away benefits from part-time workers.
Yeah, no, thank you for that, and I want to make sure that it's pretty clear. Most of the legislative initiatives were not full advocacy, those were items that were, it was important to monitor for the, you know, municipality, the city of Evanston. We did not take a overly active role, our main goal was to bring back money. I know that we've had several conversations with, you know, I believe Councilmember Burns had recommended some, you know, possible federal grant writers, we've had some conversations with those folks, we've done, I know that Anthony Jackson and Paul and David Stoneback had a conversation with the county today regarding some brownfield money. That remains our goal, just to be clear, is, you know, money. I will say that a lot of other municipalities take a pretty heavy legislative agenda and probably vote on it, but I think it was just important to keep you guys apprised of legislation that would impact the city itself.
Certainly, thank you. And last thing, just to put it on your radar, an eighth ward, we certainly need some brownfield money for development of housing on Howard Street, and so just, that's something I hope that you all look out for, as well as funding for acquisition of housing and property that the city could use to develop affordable housing, so if those things are floating out there in the ether, think of the eighth ward and then bring it back to us.
And I encourage you to check out the Grant Tracker, which has all kinds of opportunities, it's an Excel spreadsheet that we've kind of kept as a living document, and we are investigating those on a regular basis.
Thank you. And then last thing, how often do you, I don't know, who's the point person that you all communicate with, with the city?
We usually, I usually communicate with the mayor, the city manager, David Stoneback, and Sarah Flax on a regular basis.
I would love for us to think if there is a committee that we could get quarterly up, I think we even originally asked for quarterly updates, or something along those lines, so if there's a committee that we can get quarterly updates and kind of, you know, have this dialogue to make sure that we're all on the same page, I think that would be really helpful. And I'm not asking you to figure that out, I'm more so asking for staff, and not in the moment necessarily.
And just to clarify, we, we do receive quarterly updates, and we do forward those onto the council, so you all have received the Q1 update, and Q2 will be following in a few weeks here.
I think it did take some time before that started happening, there's maybe almost a, I don't know, a while before it started happening, but I do think that we should have this regular update, not just sent in a document by email, but a discussion at a committee, again, to make sure that you know what we're looking for and we know what's out there.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Houlihan, for being here. Oh, is there one more question, sorry?
This is in the more comment than a question category. First of all, thanks for being here tonight. First of all, I do want to just emphasize something you said, that you were tracking legislation, letting us know what was going on. I don't recall examples of you even filing a witness slip and supporter against legislation, but I definitely, maybe you did, I don't know, because there are some issues that truly are, you know, unanimous around here, but there were a number of occasions where you reached out and said, should I take a position, and I said, no, we're just, we just are tracking it, and so I certainly would argue that the way in which this relationship is proceeded has been precisely what was discussed and what Councilmember Reed is requesting. I also just want to publicly thank you for the help in securing those two capital grants. You know, we live in a world where there's understandably a lot of double counting and a lot of, you know, failure often has a lot of parent, success often has a lot of parents. I can say with a great degree of confidence that we would not have had a shot at accessing those funds if not for the work that you guys did for us, and to be clear, there's nothing nefarious about it, it was about identifying an opportunity precisely when it existed, making us aware of it, putting us in front of the right people to make the right substantive argument, at which point we were able to win the day. By the way, thanks go to Senator Fine and President Harmon as well for, for ultimately making those decisions that were favorable for us, but I know that I at least would have had no idea to make those phone calls at that time, and to make that particular case at that time, if not for your help, and so, you know, that is really what I had in mind when I first suggested this relationship to this council, and so I want to thank you for, for that work. Those are important projects to this community, and those resources will be, will be really helpful to us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Houlihan, for being here, I appreciate it, and that concludes my remarks.
The next item on our agenda is public comment. There are, it looks like once we kind of cross off duplicates, there are, I think, exactly 15 people signed up to speak, so everyone will be given the full three minutes this evening. We begin, as always, with those who signed up on this sheet of paper, and then we'll move on to those who signed up online. The first, well, is, all right, so the first person who signed up, signed up to speak via Zoom, so we'll go back to them, and the next person who signed up, I have to say, I just can't read. I think it starts with FAK. Well, we'll work on that up here, and move on to Carlos Sutton, who will be followed by Priscilla Giles, and then Emily Jacobson. Mr. Sutton?
Good evening, members of the City Council. I am here to make a comment first. I do not understand why this consent agenda is going to be up for introduction for P1, Ordinance 51023, and when there are so many outstanding questions and concerns about this particular development. Secondly, you have an ordinance that dictates how these procedures should go, and I wish you would follow those procedures with the previous ordinance. And thirdly, since there is no feasibility study of this particular development, I feel that the city of Evanston will be in the possession of a vacant, contaminated lot, and please do the consent decree or naming the street for Mrs. Davis. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Priscilla Giles, who will be followed by Emily Jacobson, and then
Mary Gavin.
Thank you for the chance to speak. I am a former Recreation Department employee, as you can see, and at that time, the only requirement for the participation in the program was permission and a form with emergency information. This occupied most of the youth of the city of Evanston who participated without cost. I'm sure a permit was required for the prayer vigil for peace on Saturday along Dodge, beginning at Howard Street. Prayer is good, but it doesn't provide for the youth of Evanston. It does separate the haves from the have-nots, and the new design of Mount Pisgah and the housing that's not quite sure what it really be, but will only, not just be Evanston, but other people. The plan is another separation in the fifth ward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Emily Jacobson, who will be followed by Mary Gavin, and then Rick Nelson.
Hello, okay, let's get started. Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me. My name's Emily Jacobson, and I am a co-lead of the local Moms Demand Action group here in Evanston. Our group came into being again last summer, and we've been working really hard with the mayor and the city council on the creation of the Safe Storage Act. And I would urge all of you to support it, HS2, from the Human Services Committee. The mayor's ordinance did a great, or proclamation did a great job laying out the issue of gun violence and how scary it is, and it's really scary being a parent in this day and age. Here in Evanston, as you know, a few months ago, there was a soft lockdown of all of our schools. A few, two months ago today, someone was killed at Clark Street Beach from gun violence, a young man and his two brothers, 15 years old, both shot, injured. And this is unacceptable. This is unacceptable. We are here to say that the Safe Storage Act will help in these situations, and it will help save lives. It's just a piece of the puzzle, it's just the beginning, but the research shows that in a household with secure armed firearms, ammunition separate from the firearm, 85% lower risk of unintentional firearm injuries for households with children, 85% lower risk. We know that this works, we know this is part of the puzzle, and we would urge all of you to support this. We'll be back in two weeks for the For Action section, when this will hopefully pass, and I wanted to let you know what Moms Demand Action is doing across the city in addition to this piece. We're distributing gun locks, and we hope to partner closely with the hospital to continue to distribute gun locks in these situations. We are also hoping to work with our school districts and pass out information about safe storage. Information and the tools that people need are what we need to get out there to really take a bite out of this issue. So once again, I urge you to support Safe Storage Act. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mary Gavin, who will be followed by Rick Nelson, and then Yvonne Smith.
Thank you, Mayor Bis, City Manager, Clerk Mendoza, members of city council. Good evening. My name is Mary Gavin, and I came to speak about Janet Alexander-Davis. I'm very happy that you have the opportunity to vote to recognize her devotion to the community of Evanston by having a portion of Leland Avenue named in her honor. In addition to being a community activist, an advocate for Black and Brown youth and environmental justice, she's been an ally and a model. She's been an ally to you, city council members, and to your predecessors, by speaking up about critical issues in a civil manner. Even when she disagreed with something, she always acknowledged the difficult work the city council members have to tackle. And in that same vein, her decorum serves as a model for others whose passion motivates them to come here. I trust this measure will pass the council unanimously, but maybe not without comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Rick Nelson, who will be followed by Yvonne Smith, and then Shamara Chambers.
Good evening, I'm Rick Nelson, and I'm speaking tonight in support of Janet Alexander-Davis. Last Monday, the Human Services Committee approved a resolution that supported a street naming honor for Janet. That night, attending city council members and Dolores Holmes all voiced their strong support for this gesture of recognition. Citizen speakers praised Janet for her long history of volunteerism and contributions to the community, and others who couldn't attend wrote the committee expressing their deep respect for Janet. Tonight, Mary Gavin, the Evanston Roundtable founder who just preceded me, felt compelled to come and speak in support of Janet, and more than a few friends of Janet's are here in the audience this evening. What all these people know is this: With little fanfare, Janet has volunteered tirelessly over her 80 years to make things better for her neighborhood, the fifth ward, and her hometown of Evanston. The city council has a special opportunity this evening to honor a very deserving Evanstonian. Please vote yes later this evening to name Janet's block on Leland Avenue, Janet Alexander-Davis Way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Yvonne Smith, who will be followed by Shamara Chambers, and then Radhika Suts.
Good evening. My name is Yvonne Smith, and I am a board member of People for a Safer Society, an organization which advocates, advocates for gun safety legislation in Illinois and nationally. I'm here to urge the city council to support the Safe Storage Act, which is on the agenda for this evening. We must reduce gun violence and shootings of innocent children and other persons in our community. Keeping guns away from youth and young children and other family members who should not have access to them is, to me, a no-brainer. We believe that all gun owners should store their guns safely with ammunition kept separate from that, from the guns themselves. Children know where guns are stored in the household. You know, many parents think, oh, you know, they put it away, and kids don't know where it is. Not true. They do know, and they have brought, several have brought guns to school. That's something that we have to stop. So again, I'm here to say that I hope the council will unanimously support the Safe Storage Act to your ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Shamara Chambers, who will be followed by Radhika Suts.
Hello. Los Angeles, Minneapolis, and Portland, Oregon, which also face an affordable housing crisis, voted to end zoning rules in single-family areas, while here in Evanston, there hasn't been a meeting since November. Reed, your tantrum was right on. A status quo council that only cares about the wealthy areas, but what you don't see is how you and Bobby contribute and are helping them with their agenda. The seventh ward had an opportunity to add more affordable housing to a ward that has little of it, and a wealthy ward they claim is too expensive to put affordable housing in. These same council members rejected that proposal over trees. The same trees, mature trees, they have no problem knocking down here in the fifth ward because they tell us they grow back. Don't tell me it's not possible when it was you guys who turned it down. The LUC rejected a proposal for a daycare in the sixth ward over assisting traffic congestion, parking, and zoning regulations, the same reasons we stated for this building. I guess traffic is only an issue in wealthy areas. These are the double standards the fifth ward faces every day. This pastor has publicly stated he has no money to build this church, yet he wants to trade his land for land the city deemed too expensive to clean. How much is this new church really going to cost you, pastor? By trading the land, Evanston is giving HODC the land for free in addition to more taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Radhika Suts.
If we have a corporation that has 500 units that they are getting rents, why are we giving this corporation our taxpayers' money? Why don't they use the profits from 500 units that they have and invest in affordable housing? That, to me, seems like reason. Why are they coming for our money, our taxpayers' money? So to me, that is, that is not normal. I have just shown Bobby that affordable condos in Lincoln Park, not fifth ward in Evanston, are $285,000, much bigger, much better, much more expensive location. Why don't we use our money to create the investment in our people so they can have a stake in the neighborhood? That they will not be in bondage to the corporation and the private profiteers of this corporation. This is not right, what's been done to us. It is not right. And as Mara pointed out, this is not flying in the neighborhoods by the lake. Furthermore, to enlighten, just if everyone wants to know more how this program works, please watch Politics, Poverty, and Profits, Frontline PBS. If you do not believe me, if you do not believe many people in our government who have realized that this program that has been established to create affordable housing, now we are finding out that the money is not really benefiting those that they should benefit, but it's going someplace else, as we are seeing in this particular situation. And one just more thing, how can contaminated lot, that it's extremely expensive to be cleaned, equals the lot that's not contaminated? To me, that doesn't make sense. Would any of you, would I, exchange my healthy lot for contaminated lot? That's problematic to me. So, anyone should ask questions like that? So, I mean, and we're gonna end up with this, with this building that's gonna cause us nothing but problems, and we are the affordable housing. We are the people who have served affordable housing. We are the people who have taken connections for homeless. We are the people whose rents are lower than what the rents are in other parts of Evanston. But we, no one cares about us, no one cares about our neighborhood, no one cares that the only spot that's meant for commercial, so we could have cute little shops, so we could have something to lift us, it's been taken. No one cares about that. But if it was in another ward, I bet all of you would care. But yes, forget us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I want to return to this line that I can't, it's embarrassing, I just can't quite make it out. Is there a person whose name begins with F A who signed up on this sheet who I've not called on? And if so, I'm really sorry. Okay, perhaps not. I'm still sorry, but less so. We now move on to those who signed up online. There are a few folks who signed up online to speak in person. So we'll go with Christopher Parker, who will be followed by Mary Fratini. Christopher Parker is not here, we'll call up Mary Fratini. Also not here, so now we move on to those who signed up to speak online, beginning with Barbara Tyson, who will be followed by Mike Vasilko, and then Maria Tulpen. It looks like we don't have a Barbara Tyson online at this time, so we'll move on to Michael Vasilko, who will be followed by Maria Tulpen, and then Jeffrey Bishore.
Thank you. So I'm going to repeat part of what I said at APW for items A4, A5, and A7. I just feel it's wrong to reward a consultant or contractor with additional work on the heels of gigantic failures, in this case Fountain Square and Christopher Burke Engineering. Seven million dollars later and no working fountain? Clearly, the contractor failed to perform, but it appears Burke Engineering also failed in their role as a construction manager. Burke was paid nearly $1 million, a large part of which was to act as the city's eyes, monitor and construction activities, which includes asking for some middles, watching what's going on in the field, making demands to have work corrected as it goes versus waiting to the end. Obviously, they didn't do a very good job of that. I was taken aback at APW when I heard Mr. Stoneback state that the Fountain Square fiasco was solely the contractor's fault, publicly giving Burke a pass, except, of course, we know Burke did not do a very thorough job, did they? It just drives somebody like me crazy, who does this kind of work on a day-to-day basis, to see no one held, be held accountable, squandering, you know, millions of dollars of taxpayer money, millions upon millions. It happens so frequently at Evanston, again, it drives me crazy. Consultants aren't held responsible, contractors aren't held responsible, and forgive me for saying so, but there's some staff members, some individuals who are not held accountable. And I just think somebody eventually has to come around to understanding that, or questioning why this keeps happening, and, you know, is there some other reason that this is happening that isn't apparent to the general public? I'll leave it at that. I would ask that you put all three of these items on hold. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Maria Tulpen. Pardon me. The next speaker is-
Hello, I'm Maria Tulpen. I'm a volunteer with Moms Demand Action Evanston, and additionally, I'm the chair of the Gun Violence Prevention Task Force at Jewish Reconstructionist Congregation, my Evanston synagogue, and a member of our Racial Equity Task Force. I'm speaking tonight in support of the Safe Storage Act, but with the caveat that a restorative justice option be included in the legislation. Moms Demand Action Evanston co-lead Emily Jacobson shared some information with me about a restorative justice approach to a safe storage law in St. Louis, Missouri, which allows individuals to have their civil fines waived if they're able to show that they've procured a way to safely store firearms. Since the goal of Evanston's Storage Act is, I believe, to increase public safety and not to punish, being able to show the means to securely store firearms is a way to bring about a better balance of community care. Ideally, there will be community or foundation funds for individuals to defray the costs of purchasing gun safes and/or locks. I know every town for gun safety provided the city and Moms Demand Action with cable gun locks that have been distributed free of cost. Waiving the fine under the right conditions is an important way to promote community cooperation and trust. This restorative approach will also, most importantly, help avoid the disproportionate financial burden of fines on lower-income individuals in the community. To conclude, thank you to Mayor Bis, council members, for your leadership on the Safe Storage Act, and let's ensure a restorative justice element be added, and let's also work on promoting preventative approaches by increasing community awareness about the importance of safe firearm storage and fine funds to help community members purchase firearm safes and locks. Thank you very much for listening and taking my suggestions into account.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jeffrey Bishore, who will be followed by Darlene Cannon.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Again, I would like to comment on item P1, the ordinance 51023. My name is Jeffrey Bishore. I live in the third ward at 318 Dempster, directly across the street from the claret department at 319 Dempster. For the past two years, we, the neighbors, have been working with the city and HODC, the management company, to improve the living conditions at the claret. The neighbors have a meeting tomorrow night with both the chairman and the director of HODC, along with alderpersons Melissa Wynn and Claire Kelly, to resolve the many issues which are upsetting the tenants and the neighbors, the latest incident being the street brawl The latest incident being the street brawl on Tuesday, May 23rd, which Melissa Wynn and I witnessed. It took over a dozen police officers, medics, and firemen to resolve this conflict. I'm asking you to please put a hold on passing ordinance 51023 in this City Council meeting until there is evidence that HODC has demonstrated a permanent plan which will improve the living conditions at 319 Dempster and thus benefit the tenants and the neighbors. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Darlene Cannon. I do not see Ms. Cannon in the Zoom. Ms. Cannon, are you there? Seeing that she's not available, this concludes public comment for the evening and moves us on to special orders of business. Would someone care to make a motion relative to item SP1?
I will move item SP1, Resolution 38R23, authorizing the city manager to execute emergency contracts and payments for elevator shaft structural repairs for the City of Evanston Police and Fire Headquarters.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves passage of Resolution 38-R-23. Councilmember Harris, seconds. It looks like we're gonna begin with a presentation from Ms. Biggs, is that correct?
Yes. Everyone, members of council, city clerk, mayor, my name is Laura Biggs. I'm the city engineer for Evanston. And tonight, Chief Shanita Stewart and I are going to be talking about some of the issues that are going on at the Police Fire Headquarters. I am just waiting for the presentation to be brought up. I'll go ahead and get started while they bring up the presentation. So, as you are all aware, we have had some issues with the elevator and the elevator shaft structural failure at the Police Fire Headquarters. However, there are some bigger issues going on as well, and we wanted to kind of go through that tonight and talk about some of the operational challenges that we're struggling with at the Police Fire Headquarters. The Police Fire Headquarters building was originally built as a municipal courthouse, a police station headquarters, and Fire Station 1 back in 1949. And at that time, it did not have an elevator. In 1985, they cut in an elevator shaft into the building. The building actually is a basement level, a first floor, and a second floor, so it's really only three stories that the elevator is going. However, there are actually multiple floors in the Police Fire Headquarters that are like half floors that the elevator doesn't necessarily touch. So, when they did that, and honestly, we do not have really good drawings for the Police Fire Headquarters or for the elevator shaft. At the time, while it seemed fine, then when we started doing work on the elevator to refurbish it, as it's 38 years old, we found that there were quite a number of challenges with the structural walls that surround and enclose the elevator. Okay. There we go. So, the other point that I want to talk to you about, because this comes up a lot as we discuss the Police Fire Headquarters, is that originally when it was constructed, it was to house 87 staff members. Currently, as the courthouse was, the court, it's not a courthouse, the court itself was relocated to the Civic Center here as administrative adjudication. The Fire Station 1, we built a new Fire Station 1, and we relocated that operation there, so we only have the Fire Department Headquarters there right now. But still, policing has changed considerably over the years, and now we are up to 220 staff members that are housed in a building that was originally intended to house 87. Next slide, please. At this time, I'm actually going to invite Police Chief Shanita Stewart up here, because I can talk about buildings forever, as you guys know, but she actually has quite a lot of insight on the operational challenges that are currently being faced. So with that, I'll turn it over to the chief.
Respectfully, Chief Shanita Stewart, the council. I'm also gonna bring a partner up with me, too, Sue Panarelli, who's in charge of facilities. She's been around for a little bit, not since 1949, but I'll have her get started and I'll close out.
Hi, everyone. I'm Sue Panarelli. I am the 3111 and Police Desk Manager, but under my umbrella is the Facilities. Thank you, Chief Stewart. I have not been here since 1949, but close, 1984. So, I have been around almost as long, a little longer than the elevator. Basically, the facility itself, with the elevator challenges, basically, we have lack of space, poor work environment at this time. The building does not meet ADA compliance or standards, and it's unable at this time to bring it to compliance. Also, the building cannot be met with modern codes for health and safety, and the building does not provide our police staff with adequate support as we adapt and adjust to the new community needs. Also, talk about spacing. Right now, we're at 58,000 square feet, and we really look at something almost doubling at 92,000 feet to actually meet the needs of where we're at. Thank you. All right. So a little bit about the building in 1949. We have increased two and a half times since then. Also, a very significant increase in female staffing as well. Also, our training standards, the facility even is not able to meet any, our training staff basically what 2023 needs, as far as we can't even do anything with the facility to increase improvements. Also, officers now carry so much more equipment, different equipment and different items, that we have inadequate storage space for that equipment as well. 1970s, we created 911 into the building, so that added a lot of technology as far as the building taking up space as well, very important part, though, I would add. 311 was implemented in 2011, so that added to the building as well. Also, over the years, if you've been to visit us, you can see that it's piecemealed, it's kind of Band-Aids in different places. It's a lot of fun. If you go into the building, you can never find the exit to get out of the building the way that it's staggered. And also, even the workflow inside the building is difficult for personnel from one area or one space to another. Also, it's really deteriorated spaces, inadequate spaces, and truly, it discourages officers from coming and working with us at the City of Evanston Police Department.
I just wanted to add a couple of things. I think it's important to mention the Police Department is not just operations. It communicates the department's goals and objectives. Things I evaluate as a chief is, is the building welcoming? Is the environment supportive? Does it enhance the city and department's goals of engagement? And also, is it the foundation of the department's customer service? Right now, this building isn't, from what I see. Everyone wants to work in a facility that works and meets the needs of not only the job that they do, but also the needs of the community that we're serving. The building currently doesn't even present, doesn't meet the power needs. I won't go into too much, but if you plug in a heater and a toaster, you're probably gonna lose power on the second floor. I mean, that's just how bad it is at this point. Right now, we have an officer that left, that notified us that one of the deciding factors that it came down to was the facility difference, and the Evanston Police Department facility in Orienton Heights. Since that initial officer left, we lost four more there, just to show the importance of a facility when individuals are determining where they want to work and what's available to them. I also want to mention the importance of officer wellness and work life. You know, right now, with officers on 12-hour days, there's a lot of times they don't go home. They're held over for emergencies, they're held over for forced backs, and there's not even adequate space for them or quiet spaces for them to sleep. We didn't put any pictures in here, and I wouldn't, but we have officers that routinely will sleep in their car rather than sleep into the Police Department. So I just wanted to kind of paint a picture of how dire a need we are to get into the future. If you look at any other facilities, you know, on the North Shore in Illinois, we are greatly, we are, we're still in 1949, to sum it up.
And lastly, about with the no elevator, we're struggling with personnel that have mobility issues getting to their location in the building to work. One example is one of our, is 911, so and it especially impacts them. Also, inefficiency within our staff, within the floors, being able to do things at different levels of the building. So, with the elevator being out of service, there'd be areas of great importance that would be taken out of service, the evidence tech lab being one, part of the lockup, and a few other areas not being accessible to one of the locker rooms. So a lot of challenges with that, and basically, just the whole hazard of doing, you know, the project in that area and with the walls.
No advancing. Thank you. So, this actually started in 2022 with the elevator just being 37 years old at that point. It's a hydraulic elevator. They started losing hydraulic fluid that provides the pressure to go up and down, and you could kind of hear the elevator struggling as they were operating it. So we called in the company that installed the elevator, that manufactured the elevator original, Colley, and they gave us a quote to refurbish the elevator. It takes a while to get the equipment, there's a long procurement time, so we did not start work on that elevator until April. When they went inside the elevator shaft is when they looked specifically at the top of the elevator shaft. They could see as they pushed on the walls, you could see them visibly move. And so they, we took the emergency change order to fix the structural shaft, and we thought at that time it was just the side walls. We were hoping it was just near the top, the way that the walls were built. And so, we were going to include the cost for really looking at those two walls and rebuilding what we needed to on those two walls, but part of it was to just find out as they deconstructed those two walls, what was in there for structural reinforcement. They've since then deconstructed the two walls, and they've also noticed that not just the two side walls, but the wall that the doors for the elevator are cut into also is wobbly, and there is no structural reinforcement in these walls. We haven't looked at the fourth wall yet, but based on the design of the first three walls, the recommendation is to take the walls all the way down, completely remove them, and rebuild them in masonry. Now, one of the challenges that we have is that we were not replacing the elevator cab. It's a wood cab, and we were actually going to use it to do the repair work, sort of as a moving platform, we'll work off the top of it. But in order to reconstruct them all the way to the foundation, we have to deconstruct the elevator cab and remove it out of the elevator shaft. And then, that requires us, because it's wood, and we don't think it's gonna go back together that easily, or is high quality, so now they have to procure a new elevator cab as well. So, this has a long lead time. The costs of this are growing. Actually, if you could scroll down, Allison, please. Okay. Again. Oh, well, it's fine. It has a long lead time. I'll talk to this. And we now need to hire additional consultants that we didn't previously have. We were working with a structural engineer here that is local, KPFF, that does quite a lot of work for us, as well as a masonry contractor. But as we look at needing to do this work, one of the things that the masonry contractor has indicated is that they need not just the area of the walls that they're deconstructing, but as they rebuild them, they need to be able to reach behind the walls in order to strike the joints as they rebuild the masonry. So they need about 12 inches of space. In some locations, on some floors, that exists, but in other locations, the dry walls of the room adjacent to the elevator was built right up to the CMU. And that requires us to then pull the wall out of the room that's adjacent to the elevator. The most notable of these is the evidence processing room, and for that, that room actually has plumbing in the wall that we have to tear out, and electrical as well. There's a lot of cabinets on that wall. And so we need to contract, not just for that reason, but also just, we're gonna be taking rooms out of service, tearing down walls, we need to contract with an architect, mechanical, electrical, plumbing engineering, and also contractors beyond just our structural masonry contractor. So for that reason, this is lengthening out quite a bit longer than what we expected and is anticipated to cost quite a bit more, although we're still in the process of getting quotes for the architecture and engineering services. Next slide, Allison. So when we look at the original elevator refurbishment, we were at around 177,000. It was what an elevator refurbishment costs. Then it turns out, we had to do some structural repair, and that was the emergency change order, including the structural engineer, that doubled the cost of the elevator. But now, what we are looking at is quite a bit more, just taking the evidence room out of service and then having to rebuild it is expensive by itself. And these are all really estimated numbers at this point in time. I do want to clarify, we don't actually have any hard numbers for any of this work, but it is what is coming to us. And we've tacked on a $250,000 miscellaneous, because we haven't really scoped it yet, but we do anticipate that this number could grow. Because we don't have very good plans for this, in some cases, we may find out as we do the deconstruction that we don't have as much space as we thought, and we may need to take additional rooms out of service. Next slide, Allison. And, that's okay. And what I forgot to say is that the schedule also has grown quite a bit. So now, instead of just being a couple months, it's more like eight or nine months that we're looking at. And this is the time period that this building, all three floors, don't have elevator access to get around, which impacts the ADA accessibility. We would be remiss if we talked about this stuff, and we didn't talk about some of our larger issues that we have going on. So, it has been the requests of the City Council to get more, as staff has talked about, this building has challenges, and this building has challenges, to have more information about exactly what those challenges are. And the staff also recognizes that, in a lot of cases, because a building is a whole system of systems, that we might not have all of the necessary expertise in our staff to do a full evaluation of our buildings. So we have worked over the last few years to contract with consultants to do of our large, critical facilities, to do some serious master planning, to really go in and evaluate the quality of the facilities, what is the expected life of the HVAC, what are the electrical system issues looking like, and give us recommendations for repair, or in some cases, replacement. So we have contracted with AECOM and on the Police Fire Headquarters and looking at the Service Center. We've contracted with Salis O'Brien, I'm sorry, AECOM for Police Fire Headquarters and the Civic Center. Salis O'Brien is doing a report on noise. The Service Center is being done by Greeley and Hanson, and we are getting, we have draft information on all those reports now. We are vetting it and trying to, we've responded back in some cases with a number of questions. But the truth is, is that the city has a number of legacy facilities, in many cases, large buildings that are undergoing multiple building system failures. They haven't had a lot of investment in the last 20 or 40 years. They are buildings that, in some cases, like Police Fire Headquarters, serve really critical 24/7 operations. And so, at some point, the staff would recommend that we really look holistically at how to deal with all these buildings, Police Fire Headquarters being one of them. In addition to the four top ones above the line, we have the animal shelter, the Ecology Center, which we are planning to come back within the next month, because we've received the recommendations from the consultant on that, to finalize it with the City Council. And we have more of a plan forward on that one as to how to proceed, and we hope to be on that one under construction this winter already. But as you can see, it is a really large dollar value, and so as we make decisions about Police Fire Headquarters, we want the council to have sort of a bigger picture of some of the challenges facing the city. Next slide, please. And this just talks about some of why the cost of these has just really been- And this just talks about some of why the cost of these has just really been ballooning. And part of it frankly, is just the inflation that we've been seeing over the last few years. But realistically, it's just, if you can picture your house, and these buildings are infinitely larger, more complex than a single family home. But if you have a roof that's leaking, and you don't fix the roof leak, then you will have other challenges. If you don't tuck point, you will, over time, these things deteriorate to the point, the interior of the walls start to rot out, maybe you get vermin infestations, the, you haven't upgraded the electricity or the service since 1980, but since then, you've added air conditioning and computers and all sorts of stuff. Like you, if you don't do that regular maintenance and replace these building systems, if your furnace is 40 years old, for example, then you just get to a situation where you have to evaluate, what am I doing with this building holistically? And the cost is no longer a single building system failure, it's the whole thing. This is also complicated by this last bullet point, that when you get to a situation, this is in the international existing building code that the city of Evanston has adopted, where you are doing work that is valued more than 50% of the value of the property, you are expected by the building code to bring all of the building systems up to par in compliance with the building code. And you are expected to address things like ADA. I will use an example of the civic center. We did evaluation, a real estate appraisal of the civic center two years ago, and it was estimated at $10 million. But we estimate HVAC improvements at $9 million. Now, there are a number of systems in the civic center that need to be addressed, but that by itself would trigger bringing not just HVAC up to building codes, but also electrical, ADA, structure, fireproofing, fire sprinkler systems, like the whole thing has to all sudden be addressed. You have to remove the asbestos if you're doing construction. It just becomes like a snowball effect. So, I do understand it is a lot of money, and we need to figure out a plan to address all the facilities, but this is sort of where we are. Next slide, please. So, we began a couple of years ago, and we have undergone a number of changes in management of the city, which has sort of slowed this down. But we began a study with AECOM to look at the feasibility of relocating the Police Fire Headquarters and the Civic Center, potentially together, could be separate. What were the options in terms of the available properties in the city of Evanston? What will we be looking for in a new facility? And AECOM has returned quite a lot of information to the staff about what our options are. There's a, there's a realm out there of things. And so, what they provided, it's hard to necessarily sort through and make decisions as to, give them feedback as to what our best choices are, without getting in some way or form, a little bit more information about what the values of the community are as they're looking for Police Fire Headquarters and City Hall functions. Next slide? Is there another slide after that? Yep. So, here we are tonight. This is the realm of problems that we're addressing. And as we move forward into the budget season for 2024, we really do want to have concrete progress on moving forward on some of these projects, or some of these facilities. So, to that end, here is what the staff is asking. We put before you Resolution 38R23, which would allow the city manager to enter into architectural and engineering contracts. And we actually know the actual price of the proposed additional elevator contract, so that we can get that moving. And as soon as we get a proposal that we're happy with, we can move forward with that. Second, to let you know, that's probably not the end of things that we would ask for on Police Fire Headquarters, but we feel like we're still too early in the project to know what the construction entirely is going to consist of. So, we will probably return with additional requests for authorization to move forward on construction as well at a later date. And then, we, the staff, this is just our next step, is we need to determine, what are we going to do with some of our operational challenges as the, as the elevator is out of service? And how we would move forward with addressing things like the evidence processing on a temporary basis? We have some staffing issues where people can't quite get to the second floor that are mobility limited. So, there are some details that we need to work, because nine months is a long time to not have an elevator in your three-story building. But then, there's the bigger question of the Police Fire Headquarters. And so, knowing that we've received a lot of information, really need to start paring it down and finalizing what our next options are for Police Fire Headquarters. What, if the city council could give us some feedback on if they would like to see us bring some staff recommendations to city council, a presentation of the entire world of things, should we be doing public engagement? We would just like to get some feedback as to what would be the next steps on the AECOM study in order to get feedback, to refine down the realm of options for, for, to get to good, solid recommendations that are actionable. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was grim, but still, thank you very much. You'll be shocked to learn there's a lot of lights on up here. I believe the order was the following. Councilmember Reed, followed by Harris, followed by Burns, followed by Nusma, followed by Kelly. Thank you. I appreciate the, this is a good slide to have up. Yeah. You know, grim, sobering, I don't know, whatever you want to call it. But this is really helpful, and it's helpful to understand how far, how far behind we are on some really critical things. I often bring up the number that you've given, which is our over $100 million unfunded infrastructure liability, which does not even count this infrastructure, which is our, our, our buildings. And I think it's clear that we really need to rethink the way that we are maybe even clustering and providing some of our services. Recently, it was in, for a municipal conference in Long Beach, and in their city, they have a civic center, but it's actual, it's not just their city hall, it's an actual civic center where there is a words come to my head is courtyard, but I'm not trying to say courtyard, a kind of a plaza in between a number of civic buildings. Their police station is on the same footprint, and not in the same building, but on the same land footprint as their actual city hall, their civic center. They have a port authority, we don't, but their port authority building is there. A number of municipal buildings, their library is, is in that same area, on this pretty large, truly civic center footprint. And it, it really, you know, given the number of buildings that we need to make substantial, and, you know, we thought Robert Crown was a doozy. I'm looking at numbers that are double some of that. So
And part of the reason why it's such a wide range is, there is a difference between renovating and building new. And honestly, we haven't figured out which is more cost-effective yet. I mean, as we move forward, that is something to address, but that's the magnitude, I just
Yeah. And so, I, I think we really, this council, we're doing it, we're starting to do it, but I think we really need to nail this down in the next year or so. What we're going to do with this building and what we're going to do with the other buildings. So, and that's what you're asking us to, to do here. And so, I, I, one, clearly supportive of replacing the elevators. I think that's pretty obvious for all of us that we need to do that. And you asked for direction about community discussions. I, I think the first folks we, and we have spoken to them, but we need to continue to speak to are the folks who work in this building every day, city staff, as well as, of course, the residents who need to access this building for, for various services. And, and so, I, I think we need to start those discussions as soon as possible. I think it, you know, I think we need to give our residents the same presentation and have it, make it clear what, what the challenges are. And I'm, I think we need to put everything on the table. I think, I know some folks, in fact, leaders of groups who want to protect this building live in my ward. But I think we have to make sure that everything's on the table in order to meet this huge challenge. So, I'm sorry, just one quick question, I missed the slide. So, it's 1. what million, 2.32 for the elevator repairs currently estimated?
If you can go back. There.
There we go. 1.36, yeah. With potentially it being 1.5, maybe even 2, depending on how crazy things get. So, what is the proposed funding source for this? Is this just general fund balance?
At the moment, yes. So, the city budgets $600,000 a year to deal with facilities emergencies, but that's not 1.5 million. In fact, we are, we have about, this time of year, we have about 280,000 left, around there, for facilities contingency.
And how do we fund maintenance of our facilities generally? And then, how do we plan for replacement of facilities? We know that every building has a lifespan.
Historically, there's been a lack of planning on the replacement of facilities or even building systems.
And if I can interject really quick, what I, what I think about is, I was fortunate enough to serve as the former city clerk, and so I got a detailed look at the clerk's budget, and one of the things that came out of our budget every year was fleet replacement fees, even, you know, if we, whether we used it or not. And so, so my question is, do we have anything like that where there's a line item that's either coming out of a department's budget or coming from somewhere that is dedicated to?
Facilities does have its own budget, and I would invite our facilities maintenance, our facilities and fleet manager to come up and discuss what his budget looks like for facilities maintenance.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Clerk Mendoza, Sean Trollick, Facilities and Fleet Management Manager. We do have a budget for facilities maintenance. It is really pretty much just a drop in the bucket for what we would need to really take care of these buildings. I don't know that, you know, there's never been a, a plan put together to really determine how much it is that we need to keep up the maintenance on these buildings. It's kind of, you know, we're given a certain amount, and we do the best we can with it. But we are looking into, working with the city manager's office, looking into doing evaluations of three of the facilities to kind of get a better idea of exactly what that would break down to. And it's been a recommendation of ours for, for a long time that we really dig into that and plan that out accordingly, so that we can make sure that we have either proper maintenance, maintenance funding, or determine what the best route is to take in terms of the amount of facilities that we have. We currently have around 60 facilities that we take care of. Anything from small field houses all the way up to, you know, the six prime, you know, prime buildings that we are discussing tonight. So, it, it's going to take a lot of planning, it's going to take a lot of, you know, time, time commitment from staff. But one of the challenges that we've had also is the amount of staffing that we have, you know. It's facilities and fleet management's job to manage these facilities and the systems within them and the assets within them. We work closely with engineering and with our operating departments to try to do the best we can to meet their needs, but there, there's a lot of work to be done. And, you know, we, we've got a very limited budget, so.
Thank you. Speaking of that budget, and how much time do I have left, Mayor Buss?
15 seconds.
Oh, jeez. All right. So then, I, I'll start to wrap up, or I'll be wrapping up with this, which is, you know, or have you asked the council for more funding for your division, for your department, to, to make sure that you have enough to keep up? And if not, then what are the, what are the, if you have, what are the challenges? Why haven't you received the funding? And if you haven't, what, what, why not?
So, we've, we've had discussions about it, you know, with finance, with, with other, with the city manager's office. But I don't think we've really been able to, you know, I don't think it's anyone's fault, we really haven't been able to get our, get our hands in there and really understand what it is we need. So, we haven't come formally with that request and said, you know, we, we need a budget of this much, because we just don't, we haven't had the time and the staffing to really figure that out yet.
Last thing I'll say, and then ask a question to close out my time. Are we, are we, are you all, is your department using any software to track? I was asked a similar question of, about our water lines earlier. I think you recently did upgrade to, to something.
Correct. So, we, we recently started up with a program, program called Viewworks. It's not without its challenges, but it's, it's allowing us an opportunity to finally get in and keep some better records, keep track of what we're putting into these buildings on a yearly basis. But that's also going to be something that's going to take time to build up that database and really get a better understanding of, you know, what it is that we need to put into these facilities each year.
And this really is me closing out. I, I have long advocated for us looking into creating enterprise funds for various services that we provide. I think we need to, and particularly for facilities, I think it would benefit us to look at our, our facilities as an enterprise, so we're collecting the revenue that we need to keep up with our facilities. So, we're clear on opportunities for renting spaces out to, to gain revenue. And also, you know, hopefully to help pay for software that can help us, again, we have 60 facilities spread out across our city. And I know previously, I think a colleague of mine wanted to get records on maintenance of certain facilities, and it was difficult because of the limited budget that we, as the council have provided to your department historically. It was almost impossible for you to pull some of that up in a timely fashion, or maybe even at all. And so, I, I certainly look forward to the 2024 budget. You know, maybe you won't get everything asked for, but certainly, and Manager Stowe, this is really for you, for every department to come to us and really ask for what they need. And so, we do have to really make those tough decisions about priorities. And I think this is an area that really requires that, given what the, the liability can be, you know, on that other slide of several hundred million dollars if we don't keep up with it appropriately. Thank you. Next, we have Councilmember Harris, followed by Burns, Nusma, Kelly Sufferton.
So, I won't belabor the point, but I do want to be, we have to do better care. We're letting our facilities fall apart. That's horrendous. And then, we have no choice but to make these repairs at our dire and ADA compliant. So, we do need to come up with something that is a maintenance log, maintenance schedules, something that keeps us, so this doesn't happen, right? And it keeps happening. If you have an answer, that's fine, if not. But if we're going to allocate money, and we're going to need to, we're going to need to look at a fire department and a police headquarters, I don't, Chief Stewart's going to kill me, but I don't know that criminals need to have a fancy place to be, but that's okay. We still have to upgrade the places. But we have to have maintenance logs and schedules so that we know. You buy a home, you know when you need to start looking at your furnace. We've got to do that as a city, or we're just going to keep spending this big money over and over again.
Right. So, one, one comment that I want to make on that is, you know, we do have a preventative maintenance schedule. We've got PMs that are regularly scheduled that we try to tackle and, you know, so all of that's in place. What, what we struggle a little bit with sometimes is staffing. You know, I'm not quite sure that we have the right number of staff members, support staff, to, to, to help maintain these. We do work with a number of vendors to, to tackle some of this. Those things are in place, it's just a matter of having the resources to, to take care of them. And, you know, when you spread that across 60, 60 facilities, you know, And, you know, when you spread that across 60, 60 facilities, you know, and, and that 60 has gotten to this point because we, we add properties, but we don't add support staff, right? We, we pick up new properties, facilities management has to manage and maintain those, but there's not any additional tradesmen that get brought onboard or additional funding. And so that's something to keep in mind as we go.
Yeah. No, most definitely. I don't, I'm not blaming anyone because these erosions and these issues go back to the 1949.
Back decades.
So I know that, but moving forward, are there apprenticeships where we can find people? Are you working?
Well, so we are working right now with Nathan Norman and his team. Actually, the end of this month, we'll be bringing forward a couple apprenticeship positions in facilities and fleet that will help to give us, you know, some additional hands and also allow us to train some folks and, and provide them with some skills and, and education about our industries. Yeah, so, so there is some of that that we'll be looking forward to and hopefully gaining approval on, so.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to make that, you know, say that.
Yep.
It was said before, but I wanted to be clear that moving forward, if we have a nice building, I'd hate for my children to be sitting here and having to deal with the same thing because we didn't take preventative measures. Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Burns, followed by Nusma, Kelly, and Sufferton.
One, I just want to thank all the staff members who made themselves available for the tour we had of the police department. And that was really helpful. If you saw me kind of catching up with things while, while they were going through the presentation, it's because we spent maybe an hour or two, felt like two hours, was that two hours? I was going to say, that felt like all of two hours. But it was really helpful to, to kind of get in there and, and see up close and personal what's going on. So I appreciate everybody that made themselves available for that. Are we paying a deferred maintenance fee in a sense, or is there a cost to deferring maintenance as much as we are? If that makes sense?
There is a cost.
Yeah.
So we talk about just this particular situation that brings us here tonight with the elevator. That $200,000-ish to refurbish an elevator, we, we, we spend about $5 million a year in our CIP on capital improvements across all of these facilities. And that $200,000 is kind of what we would expect to see, but the structural failure of the elevator shaft is just out of left field. That's not, I mean, we know of a lot of challenges that our police station building is currently facing, not, not the least of which is actually the chillers are in such bad condition that even if we want to move from the police station, we probably have to fix the chillers first. But the, we can't predict all the ways in which a failure will occur. And now we're on the hook for a million and a half dollars worth of repair work we don't want to do because we want to potentially get out of this building. Certainly, we don't want to spend it before we make that decision. And we just, we don't have a choice. Like, we're, we're not even, you know, doing a real competition to figure out who's going to be the best designer, who's going to be the best bidder. We're just trying to hire somebody as fast as we can so that we can move forward. So you do lose something when it's always an emergency. The service center is another situation. We just periodically get a structural failure there, particularly on what we call Building D, which includes a parking jack over the bays, where the garage bays where we store the heavy vehicles like sanitation vehicles. And it's like, one day, there's a chunk of concrete on the floor, and it's like, oh my goodness, here we go again. Get some scaffolding, find, find an emergency, structural engineer, figure out a solution as fast as we can because that's where our staff parks and that's where our buildings are. So yeah, you pay a premium every time there's an emergency.
Appreciate that. And I, I brought it up because I, and, you know, credit to Councilmember Kelly, I think she emphasizes with pensions that there's this hidden cost to not, you know, fully funded pensions. And I think the, the same is true here, maybe in a different way, but, but it's, it's still true. Do, has there, are there any examples in the last eight years, or maybe a little bit more, where, where a repair, you know, need came up that we needed to address, couldn't address, whatever it is, that impacted the, you know, whether or not we could provide a service or program at all, or impacted in a way where it, it diminished it in any way? Can you think of some examples? And I ask this because there's a cost that I just talked about, which is important, but also, it's like we, you know, one way to think about it is we maintain not only our facilities, but, but the streets at a point in which people feel like things are working correctly and at the point in which most everyone is satisfied. I think a lot about that in terms of our roads. It's like, yeah, we could repair every single crack and, and instead of patching it up, but if the public is generally okay with the quality, you know, that the facilities or the roads are being maintained, then that's different than if it's impacting the quality of services or programs that we deliver to take it back to our facilities. So I'm just wondering, what is the kind of everyday impact of not maintaining the facilities in a way that we may need to?
I have several examples.
And I understand it, I understand it better for this facility than I do some of the others. I mean, you could touch on the civic center, but I, yeah.
I'm just going to actually talk about the road thing that you, the transportation. So there is a situation where 10 years ago, every road was in terrible shape. And what we did as a public works department, this was no one person's brainstorm, is we started with a lot of smaller contracts. We couldn't possibly fund the full resurfacing of every street that needs to be resurfaced, but we have $600,000 a year of large-scale patching. We have regular pavement marking, regular crack sealing. We do pavement rejuvenation two years after a street's resurfaced, which refreshes the oil layer that protects the asphalt and extends the life of the street by an estimated five years for a very small incremental fee. So when we put our heads together and do the incremental stuff upfront, 10 years later, not to say we don't have deteriorated streets, but it was a nonstop complaint that happened all the time, everywhere. Why is my street not being resurfaced this year? So yes, I have my own, Robert Crown was certainly that way before we fixed it. Fire station four, last, a couple of years ago, where we had to take the station out of service for like three or four months while we fixed everything increases the response times. And that was a problem with a poor design compounded by a situation where we knew there were humidity issues in the building, facilities was trying to tackle them in a very like, we have a humidity problem, this is what we can do without hiring an engineer. And, you know, really was doing their best to deal with it. And then we had an ice damming problem in the roof, and we went and looked at the roof. Decades of humidity problems, mold, corrosion, like, it was just, that's what happens when you're not doing regular inspections. I'll let you talk about some more.
So Laura had touched on a number of good ones, Fire Four being one of them. You know, I just wanted to point out that there are a lot of close calls that we go through. And between facilities and fleet management and engineering, we've somehow been able to make it through some of these. But I think these, out of these six projects that, you know, we've highlighted tonight, it's important to think about what the most critical facilities are, right? There's, there's opportunities for there to be a failure in the service center or in the police headquarters where it's going to, you know, knock, knock the operations out of commissions in some, in some ways. You know, when we think about other buildings that are, you know, a little less critical, there, there's ways to kind of, you know, work around that and, you know, work temporarily from, from home, maybe send some people to work remotely or from a different location. When it comes to things like the service center and the police headcor, fire headquarters, if those are out of commission, it's not like these guys can work from home or do it remotely. So I would just remind everybody to really think about that as we're, you know, as you're providing direction on, you know, how to proceed. We've had a lot of close calls and, and somehow we make it work, but it's just a matter of time before, you know, we have a major failure with the chillers Laura was talking about at the PD headquarters. Those have been ready to go for a while, but we're, we're keeping them together and keeping it going. But it's just a matter of time, so.
Appreciate that. And then, last question for me. Do you think we have enough, that we have staff capacity to run the type of community engagement process that you think the community would, would want in this?
Sort of. We will consult, we will use the consultant to do some of it.
Okay.
Right now, we're down a position actually in our facilities and parks staff in engineering, and that's vacant. And so that's impacting our ability to keep up. Like, we have all these reports that we're sifting through that we want to present to city council, and it's been a slow roll, slower than we would want rollout because we're struggling with just, we had a person retire and, but he sent a whole bunch of stuff out to bid right before he retired, so we really have no choice but to get that stuff done because the contractor's on site. And so, yeah, we could, even if we were fully staffed with three people, we could use additional assistance in that and in parks, actually.
And the last thing, just as people are making their comments, if, if you can speak to what you would like to see in the community engagement process, because whether it's voted up or down, I plan to make a motion to move that part forward. I think we've been sitting on this for a bit longer than we need to, and we need to move things forward. So if you can speak to that, that'd be helpful. Thank you. And, and plan to support the, anything our fire department and police department need at this moment, just to kind of carry us forward, I plan to support that. That's all. Chair, thank you.
Councilmember Nusma, followed by Kelly, followed by Sufferton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll, I'll beat the horse a little bit more about not repeating our past mistakes and really doing what it takes to invest in the maintenance and upkeep of these facilities. And that's on staff to let council know what's needed. And it's also on council to approve that request. And if staff says we need two and a half FTEs to maintain the civic center, we can't get distracted by some other bell and whistle and say, ah, you guys can do it with, with maybe one person and, you know, and they can sweep the floors. It's, it's a council responsibility to make sure that we are doing what it takes to, you know, maybe spend a little bit of more money on an annual basis, but that avoids much bigger future expenses. And Councilmember Burns made a good point about the similarity with pensions. I think there's some similar thinking there. So then number two, the elevator shaft was built in 1985, and whoever was involved in that is long gone, but it seems to me that was not built correctly, not designed or engineered or constructed correctly. And I want to make sure that there are not similar problems tied to the same people or team or groups or companies that, you know, work that was done around that same time in other city facilities that might be waiting to jump out at us for, you know, another, you know, million dollars' worth of surprise expenses. So we talked about that a little bit, I think that's worth, that's worth tying down. But I really like to look ahead and, you know, given all of our capital projects that we have in our future, the civic center, the police and fire headquarters, we don't yet know if they're going to be brand-new buildings and we don't know, or, or gut rehabs in their current locations or teardowns. We don't know exactly what we're going to do yet. And at this point, I'd like to keep all options on the table. We're going to get a lot of information when we get the report from AECOM, and we're going to have to schedule some probably specials, or multiple special orders of business to have some really important discussions when we get that report. But for now, I want to keep all options on the table. And I don't think it's too early to start thinking about where this money's going to come from. We don't know exactly what we're going to do. We don't know exactly how much it's going to cost, but it's going to cost an awful lot. And spending some time kind of proactively thinking about where we can find this money might inform our discussion about what we, what options we, we choose down the road. So if that's a referral to finance and budget or to staff, to come up with some recommendations or start, you know, start some evaluation about potential funding sources for this, I'd like to initiate that process. And then meanwhile, given all that's wrong with the, the police headquarters, it would seem prudent to have a contingency plan. Like, we don't have a backup police department. The police headquarters, or the fire headquarters, that's administrative. We could move that somewhere else if we had to. If something drastic, even more drastic, happened to the police headquarters, we don't have a backup plan. There's not a police station number two that we can fall back on. So I would hate to have to avail ourselves of an emergency, you know, contingency plan for the police department, but it would probably not be a bad idea to at least sketch out what our response might be.
Thank you.
That's all. Thanks.
Councilmember Kelly, followed by Sufferton, and then Revel.
Thank you. I also just wanted to mention accessing records and record-keeping, and I think the good news is, right, we just recently hired somebody for that purpose, which I don't know if either of you want to speak to that, but I think that should help in terms of, hopefully, budgeting for maintenance going forward and understanding, yeah.
Yes, that's correct. We had approval to hire a new facilities asset specialist who we hired this year, and she started, I want to say she started somewhere around in March, but so far, she's been able to kind of really get her hands in there and start to, you know, get some of the records in place that we, that we've been missing. I'm not going to lie, we've got a long way to go, but, but, but it's a, it's definitely a, a thing that was desperately needed that we are moving forward with.
That's great. And I would say, just in terms of your question, Ms. Biggs, I think, yeah, if we can get some scenarios together, options and present them, have public, whether they're town halls or at all the ward meetings, to get public feedback, I think any decisions going forward will go much more smoothly. Thank you.
Councilmember Sufferton, followed by Revel.
Thank you. I'll be brief. I'd like to request that we have an executive session on this. I think there are things that are appropriate and necessary to talk about at our next meeting relating to police-fire headquarters that need to be discussed in executive session. And also, I just want to, and I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but Sue, I heard you, Chief Stewart, I heard you, Chief Pollup, happy belated birthday. But I have talked to you about this before. You're not asking us to fix this building. You're asking us to plan for the future of police and fire headquarters in an appropriate location, in a building that meets the needs of those departments and the residents they serve, correct?
Yes, that's correct. That's correct.
I just want to make sure that I understood that. And again, my request is that we put this item for discussion in an executive session at our next meeting.
I'd like to add, whatever meetings myself or Sue Panavelli need to be at, we'll be at that, we'll be there for the public, whatever discussion to move us forward.
Okay. I mean, I, I think it's, it's critical, particularly as it relates to the police department, that we remember that the people who are in custody in the police department still enjoy the presumption of innocence. And it's critical that we take that into account as we plan and, and build this building. So I just want to make that comment. And again, I think there's further discussion that's appropriate in executive session in the future.
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Revel.
Well, I'll be brief as well. I thought the tour of the police and fire headquarters was enlightening. I don't, I mean, I really, really dramatically eye-opening and underscored the need, the serious need for, not just for us to replace the elevator, but to really rethink, you know, a totally new facility. So, you know, we've talked a lot this evening about maintenance, and I, you know, I, I agree with my colleagues, we really need to be sure to be doing a much better job investing in maintenance on an annual basis. But the, and the elevator decision is a short-term decision, but we really need to not wait any longer before we start talking about the, both police and fire headquarters. And that, that brings us then right away to talk about future of the civic center because we may want to co-locate these facilities. So Laura, when are we expecting to be able to talk about the AECOM report?
Based on what is being said here, we'll go back with our consultants and we'll work so that we're sure that we're starting that as. we'll work so that we're sure that we're starting that as promptly as we can. It takes a while to get public meetings scheduled, if that's the road that we're going. Um, so I would, partly because our council members sometimes struggle with many meetings on their schedule, so, but we'll work with the city council and we'll work to get something scheduled this summer already and keep it moving.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we're overdue for, for these big conversations and big decisions and somehow finding big pots of money. So, thank you.
Councilmember Hidakaris.
Um, I just want to echo what, um, others have said about record-keeping. Um, one thing, um, I remember hearing this years ago when we were looking for a home, um, a building inspector told us that you only see 20 to 30% of the actual home because everything's covered up by drywall. And when you're dealing with these old buildings, there are always surprises. And so, um, let's plan for the future so that there will be no surprises 50 years from now when someone opens us up a wall in the new, whatever building we plan. So, just want to add that.
Um, I'll add just a few quick thoughts. First of all, thank you very much for this, um, very sobering presentation. Um, so, just a few quick principles that I bring to this. First of all, um, I want to echo what Councilmember Revel said, the, you know, I feel like I spent a lot of time in the police station. That tour was troubling and, uh, and surprising. And, you know, we've, we've had a lot of conversation around here, and understandably so, over the course of the last few years, about trying to understand, uh, our challenges with, uh, personnel retention in the police department. And one thing that I can tell you for sure is that building does not send a message of you're valued. And we need to have a police station that sends the message, you're valued, to the folks who work there. Uh, otherwise, they're not going to take us seriously when we tell them that they're valued, uh, because actions speak louder than words. And so I think, I think we, we have to, we have to act on this. And, um, you know, it needs to be, I think, as was mentioned by the last couple speakers, it needs to be a serious, holistic, all-in, um, building of the police department that this, that this, uh, community needs in order to provide the public safety services that, uh, we need. Um, I want to echo something that was also said a couple times, like, we're way overdue for a really comprehensive version of this conversation. Um, and so I would just throw my lot in with those who've said, "Let's do a serious, comprehensive, 360 degrees, uh, discussion with all options on the table, um, soon." Um, and the last thing I'll say, and I think this may be the place where I'm maybe not on the same page as everybody, I want this to be as pragmatic a decision as possible. Um, you know, when we're talking about what Fountain Square looks like, that's about aesthetics and values and, uh, community gathering place and so forth, here we're talking about, uh, fundamentally functional facilities. Um, and I, I would like us to be as pragmatic as possible in, uh, evaluating all the different options and then choosing the one that makes the most sense from the point of view of functionality, uh, for the folks who utilize, uh, those facilities, which is to say primarily the employees, uh, and cost, which is going to be, the, the, the cost is going to be brutal no matter what. And so I think that gives us a special responsibility to be as meticulous as possible about watching, uh, watching what that cost winds up being.
Thank you.
Uh, no one is requesting to speak for a first time. The only person is requesting to, oh, so we'll go to second cracks, starting with Councilmember Burns, who has a minute forty left.
Uh, motion, I'm not sure if a motion is needed at this point, as long as you feel, Laura, you have clear direction for, uh, next, next steps separate from this as well, because this is for action. Just to, and I may have misunderstood Councilmember Sufferton, but we are being asked to vote on, tonight on repairing the elevator, though.
Well, the next step is to enter into emergency contracts, and we are waiting, awaiting a proposal that we've requested from a local architecture firm that's done some really good work for us in the past. Um, so, to get that moving, we're asking to approve Resolution 38R23 to authorize the city manager to negotiate that final cost and get that architect under contract with the MEP Services, as well as the contract, to execute the contract with Colley Elevator for the additional work that they need to do now that they're taking apart the elevator completely. And that, we have a cost, I'm sorry, I don't quite remember, 127.
And while reading that, that resolution, that's the motion before the council at this time.
This says 250, but I, in the resolution, it says a number that's more like 127, 137 for the elevator consultant.
You know, I brought that up because I, I made a comment during the tour that I always felt uncomfortable paying, putting money into something that we may need to demo at some point. The, you know, the, um, police department being one of those things that we may decide that we want to build something new. Um, and I think the response you gave me is it would take, we're talking about a multi-year process before we have a new building or whatever it is we come up with, and that the elevator in particular, and maybe a few other items, can't wait that long, because there's some ADA issues, I think because of that, some possible civil rights issues that have, that have come up. And so, um, can you confirm that, that we are being at, we will be asked eventually, way before we settle everything else to make repairs, critical repairs in the, um, police department facility for one, and maybe even in other buildings as well?
Yes. So, I mean, if we decide really quickly to move forward, it's still public engagement, decide on what we're doing, get a consultant, they do a design, go out to bid, get construction, like, that process, we are five years from moving into a refurbished or new space. So, it does take a long time to do these kinds of big projects. The elevator, you really, I would strongly recommend you repair the elevator. You just need it.
And then, last question, just what else, do you feel like you have enough direction to move forward with the consultants on designing a community engagement?
Yes.
Process? Okay.
I do.
All right, that's all, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, so the only person requesting to speak at this time is out of time, so I'll give you just a moment. Councilmember Reed, uh, with, to end.
Yes, uh, thank you. And, and I just wanted to, uh, unfortunately disagree with something that you, you said there, at least put a different perspective out. Um, there was a time in our country when government, when we constructed buildings that were beautiful buildings that would rival any private sector building. Um, and I do think that it's worth looking at, you know, particularly with like our civic center, our police station, some of those buildings. I'm not saying break the bank here, but, um, I do think there, there, there is a worth, and it's, I think it's worth staff looking into, if we build a nice building, a nice, beautiful building, how does that impact land values, um, in adjacent properties? And is there potentially a, you know, return on investment for actually building something that adds value to the community rather than, you know, Walmart-style building that's just a square, functional, but not beautiful and doesn't add character, doesn't, you know, really, uh, show the, the values of, of our city, um, the aesthetic values of our city. So, with that, I will end. Thank you.
And with that, would the clerk please take the roll on Resolution 38-R-23?
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hidakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries. The resolution is passed. Thanks again for the presentation and, um, lots, lots more to come. We really appreciate the work going into this. That brings us to the consent agenda for the evening. The only item that I think may not stay on the consent agenda is item P2, uh, which did not, uh, was not passed, or I think even considered in P and D. What else would folks like to see removed from the consent agenda?
Let's take off HS1 and maybe do that first.
Yes.
HS1?
Yes.
Uh, A2, please, Mr. Mayor.
A2?
A5 and A7.
A5 and A7?
P1.
Sorry, what was that?
And P1.
P1?
Uh, R1.
R1?
Which is the, uh, the gun safety?
HS2.
Let's take that off, too, please.
HS2? So at this time, the list is A2, A5, A7, P1, P2, HS1, HS2, and R1. Is there anything else the folks would like to see pulled from the consent agenda?
I will.
Is it any other As after A7?
Oh, there isn't that A.
In the agenda or on the removal list?
No, I mean, I'll remove them, sorry.
No, A7's the highest, the highest number. I will.
Oh, is that the last one?
Uh, in that case, I will move the consent agenda.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves passage of the consent agenda with the exceptions of items A2, A5, A7, P1, P2, HS1, HS2, and R1. Uh, Councilmember Harris seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hidakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and the consent agenda with the exception of the items previously read is passed. Uh, we're going to begin the, um, long list of additional items, uh, with the HS section, with HS1 followed by HS2. Um, I think you're the chair, right? So would Councilmember Harris care to make a motion relative to item HS1?
Yes. I move for the Resolution 36R23, approval of an honorary street name sign for, um, why did I just lose my train of thought? Janet Alexander Way, Davis Way, with honors.
Second.
Councilmember Harris moves passage of Resolution 36-R-23. Councilmember Reed seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Reed, followed by Harris, followed by Burns, followed by Newsma.
I, I got to say this, uh, during Human Services, but I, I, you weren't there, Ms. Alexander. Uh, I recall, uh, first meeting you, it had to be, uh, yeah, 2016, so not, not as long as some other folks have had, uh, the experience with you. But, uh, we were working with, uh, Nina Caven to, to create a, an event in the 5th Ward at Twigs Park. Uh, and from there, I got to see, um, not only dedication to our youth, but then your dedication to the environment, um, and to, uh, environmental justice. And, uh, so it's just been an honor to have had the opportunity to be in your presence and, and learn from, uh, you know, the, the, the lifetime of service that you've committed to our community and to various issues, uh, that impact all kinds of folks throughout the community. So, really honored to, uh, be able to sit up here in a moment when we're getting ready, when we're having the opportunity to recognize your work. So, thank you.
Councilmember Harris, followed by Burns, followed by Newsma.
So you were the one who believed me when I said I saw a coyote. Everybody else was like, "No," and she was like, "Yes," um, that we shared between the 2nd and 5th Ward. I don't know where the coyote went, but it has been my honor to know you, my family to know you, for the services that you have provided, Evanston. We owe you more than naming a street after you, but that is one of the highest honors that we can bestow to you from the seat that we sit in, and we appreciate you. And for myself, I only hope to be a portion of all that you have done to the city, for the city. So, I appreciate you and thank you so much.
Councilmember Burns, followed by Newsma.
I'm going to, uh, save most of my comments until, um, the ceremony, and I would invite everybody to attend the, the ceremony, which is a lot going on, but July 22nd, is that correct? July 22nd, um, believe that ceremony is going to start at 2:00 PM-ish, 2:00 PM? And so I would invite everybody here, but also, um, the listening community to, to attend. So I'll save most of my comments for that event, but just want to say, if there was a, um, a community engagement Hall of Fame, that without question, Ms. Alexander Davis would be a, a first-ballot nominee for sure. Um, they, no one told me that when you, that when you're elected to 5th Ward Councilmember, that it comes with a Janet Alexander Davis. Um, but I'm glad it did, because she has been, uh, a tremendous support, not only to me, but councilmembers going back, at least to Alderman Homes. And that's just a small kind of role that she volunteers to play here in our community. So, I'll leave it at that. But thank you so much tremendously for everything that you have done for Evanston, and, uh, and I'm honored to be able to support this recommendation tonight.
Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll, uh, extend my thanks and appreciation, uh, to Ms. Davis. I, uh, first came in contact with you when I was chairman of the Utilities Commission, and you brought me into a conversation with some of the neighbors about the, uh, the pump station on Church Street. So, I, I appreciate your involvement there. I hope that issue has not, uh, proven to be the headache that people were afraid of, but thank you for your years of work with the Environmental Justice Evanston Group. I appreciate that. And I'm going to coin a new acronym, uh, not WWJD, but WWJDD. Thank you.
I just want to quickly add my thanks. You know, uh, before I became, uh, mayor, Ms. Alexander Davis was willing to give some of her time to advise me on environmental issues. And, um, you know, obviously, I learned a lot from that. Obviously, I benefited tremendously from her knowledge on those issues. But the thing that really sticks with me was that her advice was never narrow. It wasn't, "Here's how to think about one environmental issue." It was, "Here's how to connect that with the budgetary challenges facing the city. Here's how to connect that with the equity challenges facing the city. Here's how the, my history in the city teaches me to understand not just the issue before us right now, but what the direction is going and how it's going to affect people in the future if we don't do something about it." And I just found that really, um, inspiring, really eye-opening. Um, it's something that I carry with me, and I do my humble best to learn from and emulate, because I think, I think that kind of thinking, um, is really, it comes from a question of, what could we have done differently before that would have stopped us from experiencing the difficulties we're experiencing today? So I just want to say thank you. Uh, I feel lucky to know you, lucky to have had a chance to learn from you. Uh, and I know I'm going to continue learning from you, if you'll be generous enough to continue allowing me to. Thank you very much. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hidakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye with stars.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, Resolution 36-R-23 is unanimously passed. Congratulations. Uh, Councilmember Reed?
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot that the chair moves. I was going to move the next thing. But I, I, I'd just quickly say that that's a more eloquent, uh, way of saying, "Let's try to get to yes." So, let's try to get to yes on most things. Thank you.
I think I heard her telling people, "Quit yelling at us."
Well, speaking of both of those concepts, Council- Well, speaking of both of those concepts, Councilmember Harris, would you care to make a motion on item HS two?
Yes, I move ordinance fifty-seven oh twenty-three, amending City Code, Section nine dash eight, creating the Safe Storage Act.
Second.
Councilmember Harris moves passage of ordinance fifty-seven dash O dash twenty-three. Councilmember Reed seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I was happy to co-sponsor this. Thank you for allowing me that honor. Uh, I wish there was more we could do. We are nine people in Evanston, Illinois, doing what we can. The issue we're talking about here goes far beyond our municipality, far beyond our state. This is a national issue, and the nine people we really need to be concerned about wear black robes and, uh, sit in Washington, DC. They can do a lot more than we can. DC versus Heller is something that I would like to see overturned. We gotta play the cards we're dealt, and this is one small thing we can do in our municipality to keep our children safe. Our, not, not just our children, keep ourselves safe. So I'm fully in supportive of this and looking forward to voting for it.
Thank you. Before we go on to the next speaker, I just wanna, um, make one announcement. There's a, I apologize for this, there's an, uh, error in the agenda. This is, it's written for action. Uh, this is an ordinance, so it requires two votes. This is the first, so, um, uh, it ought to say for introduction, and should this pass, it'll be on the agenda for action in two weeks. Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. Um, I, I'm also, uh, happy to have co-sponsored this as well. Uh, I echo the sentiment that Councilmember Nusma shared. I wish there was more, or, not that I wish there was more, I, I do think that there is more that we can do. And I don't say this too often, but I do think it's worth taking a play from the Republican playbook and the way that they have been aggressive on trying to find strange legal loopholes to uphold, um, abortion bans. I think we should take some risk and, uh, you know, try to work with our, our, our legal counsel to explore where there are gray areas, um, in, in, in our gun laws and take a risk. And if it means that someone sues us, which I think is a fairly low likelihood in our particular community, but if someone does, I think this is a worthy enough issue that it's worth joining with communities across our country to try something new, take it to court, and see if, uh, the great minds of Evanston, uh, can do something that other communities couldn't do, which is, or haven't successfully been able to do thus far, which is get really creative with gun control measures that will pass, uh, Supreme Court muster, particularly with this Supreme Court. And so I think there's more that we can do. I think we, and, but this is a really great strip, step. I don't wanna diminish what we're doing here. This is a really great step, but I do think we can continue to push the boundaries, um, appropriately of, uh, you know, laws that we can create to create safer communities. So thank you.
Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Herakaris.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma.
Aye.
Councilmember Burns.
Aye.
Councilmember Suffernan is not here. Councilmember Brevell.
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion passes, uh, the, and, uh, ordinance fifty-seven dash O dash twenty-three is introduced and will be on the agenda two weeks later for action. We now go back to our regularly scheduled, uh, agenda, uh, beginning with, uh, item A two. Councilmember Reed, would you care to make a motion here?
Yes, I move item A two, approval of the BMO Harris Amazon credit card activity.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves passage of, uh, moves approval of BMO Harris Amazon credit card activity. Councilmember Nusma seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Herakaris.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma.
Aye.
Councilmember Burns.
Aye.
Councilmember Brevell.
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the credit card activity is approved. Councilmember Reed, would you care to make a motion relative to item A five?
Yes, and without objection, I'm going to move item A five and A seven at the same time. Uh, so I move, uh, items A five, approval of contract with Christopher B. Burke Engineering LTD to provide engineering services for the Central Street, uh, slash Central Park Avenue Traffic Signal Modernization Project. Then I also move A seven, which is approval of a contract with Christopher B. Burke Engineering LTD to provide engineering services for Leon Place Reconstruction, uh, for the Leon Place Reconstruction Project, uh, located at Simpson Street, uh, between Simpson Street and Ridge, I don't know.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves approval of two contracts with Christopher Burke Engineering LTD, one for engineering services for Central Street and Central Park, uh, Traffic Signal Modernization, and one for engineering services for Leon Place Reconstruction. Uh, Councilmember Nguyen, seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. I just pulled this off in case, um, for the public who may not have seen the APNW meeting. Um, we did vote to, uh, direct staff to request that, that Burke Engineering that was hired for the Fountain Square, to oversee the Fountain Square, um, project debacle, um, that we get directly from the, this firm that we paid about a million dollars to oversee that, that we get an explanation as to, um, you know, what was missed, why it was missed, um, how we, you know, that ended up happening, that we hired a firm to oversee it, so that we get it straight from the firm. So I just wanted to make that statement for any of the public that didn't, um, see the APW. Thank you.
Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Herakaris.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen. Councilmember Nusma.
Aye.
Councilmember Burns.
Aye.
Councilmember Brevell.
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, uh, the motion carries and the two projects are approved. Uh, this brings us now to item P one. Uh, would someone care to make a motion relative to item P one?
Mr. Mayor, I move item P one, which is ordinance fifty-one oh twenty-three, authorizing the sale of city-owned real property at eighteen oh five Church Street, seventeen oh eight Darrow Avenue, and seventeen ten Darrow Avenue.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves, uh, approval of ordinance fifty-one dash O dash twenty-three for introduction. Councilmember Burns, seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Kelly.
Um, so I have some concerns about this. I mentioned this at PND regarding, just like LUC did, regarding the feasibility, um, of the Mount Pisgah to build on that parking space. I am concerned that the city is gonna end up giving away a lot and end up with a empty parking lot that we no longer own. Um, I have concerns about the IEP A report on the environmental issues there. They stated that it was okay for industrial, um, use there, only not for residential or others, so I'm concerned about that. So, and, but I'm mostly concerned about the current state of affairs at the three nineteen HODC building, and I am pleased that we will be meeting tomorrow evening with the Chair of the HODC Board, as well as Executive Director, Richard Koenig, in hopes of, um, getting a formal agreement to, um, to improve the, the, um, situation in a lasting and permanent way, um, at the Claridge Building. So I hope that we're able to secure that, um, prior to our next meeting, so, thank you, that's all.
Councilmember Burns.
Just wanted to say, I, I don't ever remember seeing anything that said the, when, suggesting that the EPA is saying that res, they would not recommend residential for this site, especially the site where the residential is going to be, because the residential is not gonna be on the corner, it's gonna be...
Right, but it's only for industrial.
So the residential won't be for the, on the corner where there was, where there used to be, uh, a gas station, I believe. It's, it's gonna be where the church is currently, and I don't think that site is the site where the, the underground, you know, storage tanks were. So I just, if we can get some clarification around that. Uh, and I don't even know if that's relevant to what, maybe it is, but I'm happy to discuss it now or, or offline, but I just, if we're gonna discuss it, I would like some clarification on, on that point.
Uh, no one is requesting to speak for a first time? Oh, sorry, Ms. Flax.
Good evening, Mayor. It's members of the City Council, Clerk Mendoza. I can comment on the, um, NFR, if that would be of help. The, there are areas that are capped, um, and need to be, remain camped, capped for the, um, contamination that hasn't been removed, or if they're digging down below, anyone's digging down below that, the contaminated soil has to be removed and, um, disposed of off-site appropriately, and any, then they have to recap now. In essence, if you build a foundation, um, on the land, um, that, in essence, caps it. And the, um, to, to put the, the way the church is constructed, they would have to have some kind of, um, they aren't doing a basement, so they would have some kind of, um, pillars or something to hold up the structure. The soil for that would be taken out and disposed of appropriately, and, um, I do not believe there would be any more remediation needed for that use.
Okay.
Uh, no one's requesting to speak for a first time, so we go to Councilmember Kelly with three minutes and fifty-five seconds left.
So I just wanted to, the, the IEP A did state that it was safe for industrial use, so, so I'm not denying what, um, Ms. Flax has said, but I am saying that that was, um, their approval for industrial use.
Could I read one part of this? They recognized, um, the remediation site is approved for residential and/or industrial slash commercial land use. So it is...
Thank you. I may, quickly.
Uh, Councilmember Kelly still has the floor. Okay, uh, Councilmember, uh, Burns with four minutes left.
And I just wanted to say generally, um, and this is to anyone that is concerned about this particular project, please feel free to reach out to myself or city staff if you have any questions about it. Just from tonight alone, every time this comes up, I, I hear at least ninety percent of what it said is just not accurate. And I'm not criticizing the individuals or, or challenging their intelligence. I'm just simply stating a fact that ninety percent of what you hear in public comment is not true. And, um, and I'm willing to debate this publicly, I'm willing to do it with a private arbiter, and you show your facts, the, whatever it is, but I, I just wanna be clear that, um, if you have questions, genuine questions about this project, either related to the church or related to HODC, please do not hesitate to reach out to staff or to myself, and we will provide a response in writing. Uh, and, and after all of this is, is done, because I'm, every time when you see me, when I, during public comment, I'm taking notes, because I'm literally taking notes of everything that, that's said during public comment. After all this is done and we approve it, I'm gonna send out a newsletter and go line by line, giving facts and links to every single thing that's been said at public comment. But until then, please don't hesitate to reach out to city staff if you have any questions. Thank you.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for a first or second time, so we go back to Councilmember Kelly with three minutes and forty seconds left.
Um, thank you. So I did bring this up, this is the third time, and I, I'm sorry, I don't have the document in front of me, but I, um, did refer, I have the, the IEP A document that cited industrial use, so I don't have it, but I have brought it before, and it wasn't challenged in the past, so. And I've also brought up the feasibility as the LUC has, so these are not, this isn't new. I just wanna say that, you know, the LUC also cited concerns with regard to evidence of financial feasibility for the, um, plan for the corner. Thank you.
Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Herakaris.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma.
Aye.
Councilmember Burns.
Aye.
Councilmember Brevell.
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries and, uh, ordinance fifty-one dash O dash twenty-three is introduced and will be on the agenda for action in two weeks. Uh, this now brings, this now brings us to, uh, item R one. Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, I, I move item R one, resolution forty R twenty-three, adoption of the civility pledge, uh, by the mayor and the city council.
Councilmember Reed moves passage of resolution of forty dash R dash twenty-three. Councilmember Nguyen, seconds. Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. I, I, I wanna address this. I, I'm fully in support of the civility pledge, and I appreciate, uh, the, the Illinois Municipal League for, uh, working on this. I appreciate Manager Stowe for bringing this forward here, but I, when we talk about civility, I'm really disappointed in some of our media, um, uh, with the coverage of, of, of this particular item. One was framed as if, uh, it was about one council member and one incident, uh, where, um, I wouldn't classify it as a tantrum, where I shared my genuine disappointment, um, about a vote on a particular issue, uh, that I think has a lot of data and science behind it, and I stand by, um, that disappointment. It's because I really believe in my colleagues, and I believe in you all and, um, the progressive nature and the, our willingness to, uh, try new things. And so it's disappointing that, it, it's not untypical that Evanston now would, uh, cover an item in the way that they did. It was shocking to see the Tribune and other publications run with that same, uh, story, although this isn't the first time that's happened. It happened with the quote-unquote Reed's topless beach plan, which was not a thing. And so this has been a unfortunate pattern that Evanston now has engaged in with, with a number of us, particularly me. And it's disappointing that so many members of our community are not using their discernment. You know, there are, there's a lot of, uh, there, there are a lot of really uncivil, uh, things that folks, that all of us have to experience being in this job, and it's a part of public service. I mean, uh, folks suggested that instead of a civility pledge, that we need to take an IQ test, uh, because of, uh, specifically because of Devon Reed's, um, you know, essentially idiotic ideas that he puts forward. I'm fine taking an IQ test. I've, you know, I'm sure we've all had it, you know, I've been called a virtue, virtue signaling moron for supporting Mayor Biss's proposal or referral, uh, around electric stoves. I may be a moron, but I'm not a virtue signaling moron, I... And then, you know, folks have said, you know, for the council to recognize that Reed is a threat to civility but not underlying society, you know, these are very outrageous and uncivil comments, and I, and I think we, as a community, need to, to do better. I appreciate working here with all, everyone in this room. I appreciate working with, and we have differences of opinion, but I've never felt that anyone in this room, right now, has been uncivil to myself or really anyone else up here. We've had disagreements, we see, we don't see IDI all the time, but that's democracy. That is democracy. And so, um, I'm really looking forward to supporting this. I, I I think we need to do more to engage with our community to make sure that this civility pledge is being followed both ways, and that we're giving both this council and the public and between each other and our staff, that we are understanding that we, we all want to make our community better. We approach it in different ways. We have different styles of, of doing that, uh, you know, and so looking forward to adopting this and looking forward to this becoming more of a practice, uh, even more so than it already is between our, each other, uh, between ourselves and the public, and vice versa, between the public and the folks who sit on this diocese. So, uh, thank you.
Uh, I, I just wanna quickly, um, react to some of that. You know, I mean, look, I'll admit it, I have often viewed, uh, a Tribune editorial attacking me as a sign of my, heading in the right direction, and I don't know that, I don't know that I'm ever gonna change my view of that, um, so, you know, that was... and I don't know that- I don't know that I'm ever gonna change my view of that, um, so, you know, that was, you know, I appreciated that, um, that indication that we're- we were doing the right thing here. But I- I do think it's important to say, as someone who was one of the co-refers of this, this was not directed at a particular person. It was not. It was not a reaction to a particular incident. It's, in fact, a boilerplate document produced by the Illinois Municipal League and adopted verbatim by a number of other communities in an effort across the state to have government bodies have more civil and productive, respectful discussions. And I just- I just wanna, you know, echo Councilmember Reed's comments. I think any effort to construe this as somebody taking a shot at somebody else is a step away from civility, not a step toward it. So, this is something that when, you know, when I sign this tomorrow, I'll sign it and think about how I can improve in my own efforts to treat everybody with respect, so we can be more productive, and I- I know that all of you are gonna be thinking that about yourselves when you vote for it, and I think in that, that's the spirit in which this was introduced by the city manager, and, uh, that's a spirit, uh, that will enable us to use this kind of attitude to be better at our jobs and better at serving the community. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hara Gharis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Winn?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
And Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and Resolution 40-R-23 is passed. Uh, this brings us now to call of the wards. Councilmember Reed?
Thank you. Uh, eighth ward- ward meeting on the last Thursday of the month. Uh, we do not have guests lined up yet, but it will be announced, uh, in our newsletter, uh, which I aim to have out about a week before, um, the meeting, uh, which will be June 29th. Uh, we plan to have this meeting in person at the Levy Senior Center, uh, so you can look forward to that at 6:00 PM. Very quickly, um, if folks want an example of an uncivil, uh, um, council, uh, you can Google Flint, Michigan, and you can Google Eric Mays, and you can have a- spend a 15 minutes watching, getting a good laugh off, uh, hopefully, um, and watching their council, and that is an example of what an uncivil, potentially, council looks like. Outside of that, uh, thank you. Uh, looking forward to executive session. Uh, thank you.
Councilmember Hara Gharis?
So, Thursday, um, ninth ward meeting, um, in person at Robert Crown Library. Uh, we will be in the Reading Garden at 6 o'clock, so Thursday, June 15th. See you all there. We'll have, um, Parks and Rec Director Audrey Thompson as our guest.
Councilmember Kelly?
Uh, ward- uh, virtual ward meeting this Thursday at 7 o'clock. I'll send out a reminder tomorrow. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris?
Second ward meeting tomorrow, 7:00 PM at ETHS in the South Cafe, and residents can enter through door one or two because there's construction happening. Also, on June 22nd, um, there will be a second ward business meeting, where I'll be meeting with all the businesses that are available in the second ward. And then, last but not least, there will be a redo of Chief Logan's street naming. It got rained out last year, so they will be hosting it again, um, June 24th. Thank you.
Councilmember Winn? Councilmember Nusma?
Office hours in July will be Saturday, July 8th, 10:00 AM to noon, will be outside at Fountain Square. And then, on Tuesday, July 11th, uh, fourth ward- ward meeting, 7:00 PM at Robert Crown.
Councilmember Burns?
Tomorrow, at Fleetwood Jourdain, the NW DEBE Committee, uh, which I have the pleasure of chairing, is hosting a contracting fair. Uh, it's targeted towards businesses, local businesses in Evanston, who are interested in, uh, procurement and contracting opportunities at our, uh, largest institutions in Evanston, Northwestern Rotary, uh, North Shore being a few, District 65. Obviously, a little bit of a scheduling conflict. Did not realize that the second ward, um, meeting was that day, so we'll- we'll make sure to turn away any second ward residents and tell them they need to go to their- their ward meeting. No, but, um, we're, uh, happy to- to host this event, um, and looking forward to, uh, good attendance. So far, I think we have 84, uh, businesses who filled out the pre-registration form, so we're- we're excited about tomorrow, and if you have some time, feel free to stop on by. All right, take care.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Um, just a reminder that I was asked to pass along that, um, the berm at Canal Shores, where many people have enjoyed watching Fourth of July fireworks, is closed this year, and you cannot do that. Plan accordingly.
Councilmember Revelle?
Um, I'd just like to, um, mention that I'm gonna be having a ward meeting Tuesday, uh, June 27th at 7:00 PM, upstairs in the parasol room with, um, overflow rooms on the second floor. There'll be a Zoom link for people who wanna listen from home, and we'll have a recording of the meeting on, uh, the city's, uh, website, um, for the- for the Ryan Rebuild project. And, uh, it's gonna feature three different presentations. One about, um, the sound study for the, uh, stadium project. One that's gonna talk about parking management, um, for this- for the con- it's particularly oriented for the concerts. And the third one, basically, concert operations, what it takes to get all set up and how a concert is gonna work. And then, there's also gonna be a presentation from Matt Rogers, who's the Chair of the Land Use Commission, talking about, you know, what are the standards that the Land Use Commission is going to be looking at when they, um, consider the Ryan Rebuild project, um, and then what- what will be the process for the meeting in terms of, uh, opportunities for public comment. So, um, it promises to be a very interesting evening. I encourage everybody to tune in.
Uh, Councilmember Nusma has recognized to make a motion.
Pursuant to 5 Illinois Compiled Statutes 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding, uh, collective bargaining, purchase or use of real property, and litigation. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act as set forth in 5 ILCS 120/2A, Sections C2, C5, and C11.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves the city council resolve into executive session to discuss the items just mentioned. Councilmember Winn, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hara Gharis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris? Councilmember Winn? Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and at 9:29 PM, the city council moves into an executive session to begin immediately in the council member library.